Larry Chuning.
Here.
Bill Goldsmith is here, Mary Hansen.
Here.
Sandy Sturgill.
Hi, Abby.
Alana Courtney is out of town, but we have a quorum. And so this meeting is called to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
It's early. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
Motion is made in second. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. Sandy Sturgill.
Yes.
Mary Hansen.
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuning.
Yes.
Beth Justice.
Yes.
Marjorie Austin.
Yes.
Austin, yeah. All right. The first item, something that has been a chronic issue in town is water runoff, potholes, road conditions. And I thought it might be helpful to have somebody from VDOT come here and give us the rules of the road, as it were. Let us know who does what, what, any plans are going forward, and just some basics as to who they contact for what and what responsibilities are VDOTs and what responsibilities belong to property owners or to, well, somebody else, anybody else. So Mr. Ron Peeks from VDOT is here.
Yay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honorable counsel and public. Hope you all having a beautiful day today because Saturday's not gonna be good.
Yeah.
We're saving most of the good weather for, what is it, November 3rd and 4th?
Yes.
Trying to for the Oyster Festival. And of course, we will be present during that for the traffic control, which is a pretty interesting little feat for us to pull off. We do it every year, so we've got it down. But trying to get cones, about 300 of them.
It's hard to do.
Out from, you know, Colonial Pizza, all the way out to Molly's Way in like 20 minutes with cone bars and all the trappings and of course, on the other end of town as well. Hey, I'm impressed with myself sometimes. I've done the cones, the cone bars. This year, I won't have to do that, so I was grateful for that. But anyway, I'm Ron, Ron Peeks. I'm the Assistant Residency Administrator for the Saluda Residency. And I have a boss, Lee, who was hoping to come tonight, but he had another engagement he had to take care of. And you know, as far as Saluda goes, I'll give you a very quick perspective maybe on VDOT. Of course, we have a central office in Richmond. And those people, they're in the tower, that's all we know. And do they know exactly how to rubber meas the road like we do here locally? We don't think so, but they're still our people. And the state is broken up into nine districts that cover the entire state. And our district is the Fredericksburg District. And so we have to drive up to Fredericksburg for the meetings when they snap their fingers and call us up there. We have to drive all the way up to Fredericksburg for our district meetings. And then within that district of Fredericksburg District, there are three what's known as residencies. I started working at VDOT, I was wondering what, where'd they come up with that name? But I do not know, but there are three groups in the Fredericksburg District. And Saluda is one of the three. You've got the Northern Neck Group, and then you've got the Fredericksburg Group that deals around the Fredericksburg area. Grand total, I think, is 14 counties. Saluda, we have six. Six counties and three towns that we do our best to operate and maintain the state roadway system. Our six counties are Gloucester, Matthews, Middlesex, King and Queen, King William, and Essex. And of course, the towns are, my favorite, Urbana. And of course, we have West Point and Tappahannock as well. And I say my favorite because we were blessed with a new office. Hadn't been that long, about five or six years now. They replaced a building that I think started in the early 40s. In fact, we still have a building on the back lot that was used to shoe horses. And many, many, many years ago, early on in the VDOT world. But anyway, you know, Middlesex certainly our favorite county as well because we're right here. And when we were building that building, we moved our temporary office right up the street here, across from the IGA. And we know and love the hot bar in there and the restaurants in Urbana because from Saluda, and I'm not disheartened, Hardee's. Are the groceries, the gas station on the corner. Are Chad's Dads right across the street, but there's so much Chad's Dads you can eat. So I still come over here to the IGA. Something different, thank the Lord reopened. And sorry to see Bubba's go, you know, and those kinds of things. But we're here and we are your local people, Saluda. So we're your first contact for a number of things. One, I won't say too much about it because you probably don't care that much, but our land use department for our residency is in the building. And they do all the driveway permits and the things that require permits to work in our right of way. I think we total about 100 people for all six counties. And residency office, it's about 85 workers. And then 15 administrative people, they swear we don't work, but we do. And out of that 15, about half of those are fiscal people that track the time, pay the bills and those kinds of things. Saluda, Middlesex, we have our headquarters right behind the office. And they employ 15, 16 people to try our best to take care of the 175 miles plus or minus of roads that we have in the county. We're maintenance. That's our charge at the residency. And did have a few brochures, I think I'll pause and hand them out. Customer service brochure.
Thank you.
Got some good stuff in it. And one of the things I did want to make sure that I said something about is this little card. Well, I want to make sure you give it along.
Thank you.
And I do have.
Thank you.
Do you have a little card in the back here that you can take off and put it on your refrigerator or something? This is our VDOT call center. And for issues of maintenance, which is in the brochure as well, you know, we clean culverts, fix curbs and gutters, all the dead animals, and you'd be shocked at that.
That's rough.
That number, we are apparently the deer capital of the area. Disc cleaning, dust control, grading roads, stone placement, guardrail mowing, pothole filling. And of course, we do also remove the snow. Debris from the roadway, tree trimming, and those sorts of things are all maintenance items. And so our headquarters is charged to deal with that. When you have an issue, it's always way better than calling me to call our 1-800 number. That if you have an old phone that's got the letter still on it, it's 1-800-4-Road. And we do have the sweetest people that answer these phones. And they're also intelligent and compassionate. And they will listen to you and try to identify exactly what the issue is, where it's at. And they generate an electronic work order. And that electronic work order will go to the right location. They're actually in southwest Virginia. But that work order will go to, in the case of Middlesex and Urbana, will go directly to the superintendent at the headquarters. And that way, we can manage the work and the problems that people identify out there that need to be taken care of. Very handy little brochure. And I've got another one that I'll give out to you. It's concerning drainage on roadways. I haven't really intended to go through this, but I guess I can. Since I heard words drainage.
Well, one of the issues, there have been plenty of complaints, and I think we need some clarification is you guys are maintenance, but who takes care of stormwater runoff and those kinds of things? How is that taken care of? That's what the drainage, I don't know that you need to go through the whole brochure, but I know you patched Colorado and Cross Street, and that kept the water from ponding there, but I guess there's still some collection issues off the roadway. Kent Street was improved some. I know there's places that pond in other locations. And I know that was a concern, and whether that's a local office thing, whether that's a different division of VDOT.
Okay.
You know.
Well, we did do some patching work. And they did address some of the water that's ponding on the road. And that is a maintenance item for us. And I don't want to go too far askew because it was maintenance patching. And there is a distinction between maintenance patching that we do out of the headquarters and the paving of Urbana Road and Route 3 and 17. They're all construction projects, not funded to our little budget. And our schedules that are developed annually and based on the priorities, almost 100% on condition, a condition index for roads. There were other roads in Middlesex that were secondary roads that were resurfaced as well. I don't think we had any in Urbana this past paving season, which is just about up. But next year, nearly the entire town is on our schedule for resurfacing trees.
Yeah.
Now, I want to give a disclaimer. And the disclaimer is that's not going to include Cross Street. We've paved recently, you know, Watling on around to Virginia Avenue. And that's not a part of next year's schedule. So there is a one or two exceptions, and there's roads we've recently paved. But every other road is on next year's schedule and.
Where you did the maintenance, is that on next year's schedule?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Yes.
But Virginia Road, you said not Virginia Road, Virginia Street? If you go down, where Virginia Street goes down to the waterfront?
We will get that section. I'm really talking about the mid drag, if you want.
That needs it.
But it is, it's on the schedule as well. And I will mention that it's not a new product that we'll be using because we've been using it for about five or six years. And it's called a Cape Seal or Slurry Seal. And we're excited about it. It has proven to extend pavement life at least 10 years. And it leaves a pretty nice surface as well, black surface. And we've done this in a couple of subdivisions in Gloucester, as well as almost the entire town of West Point. And results have been very good from that. It's not asphalt from a laydown machine. It's a separate type of treatment. But of course, this year, we've got, what, 227, 317, and those on that kind of schedule. And that's a construction schedule.
Do you know when it is going to be scheduled? Instead of saying it's scheduled, do we have a timeframe that we know?
For next year?
Yes.
Oh, well, right now, I can tell you that it's gonna be between April and October. Because that's the paving season. You know, I say that because it's, I don't know if it's, a lot of times, people don't understand this, so I guess it's worth saying. We bid these things in giant packages. And it's a ton of money. It dwarfs our annual budget for the six counties and three towns probably 50-fold. And so, and they go out on these statewide bids. And when they're awarded, the contractor's obligation is to complete the work between April and October. And we do not control their schedule as to how to accomplish that work. We do get two weeks' look aheads from all our contracts as what they think they're gonna be doing in the next two weeks. And a lot of times, we're not going to know anything until we get a two weeks' look ahead schedule and see that, you know, Rappahannock is on the list to start week after next. So, you know, the way they're bid, you got that time period in there. They've got liquid damage damages after the end of that time period if they haven't gotten the work done. But we really do not control the actual schedule.
Okay. Can you influence the schedule?
Not really.
Anyway. It ponds a little bit on Kent Street still.
Or at least Powers lives. Yeah.
Have you all have looked, I know you've done some work on Kent Street.
We were asked by the way, I didn't mean to interrupt Larry, but it did. We were asked by Garth. We met with Garth at specific locations that he wanted us to look at. And so we did. We looked at them and came up with what we could pull off as maintenance. And in all three of the, I believe it's three locations, I think all three of them, this happens over time where the ground around the road will build up. Guess all you gotta do is go to Jamestown or somewhere, Williamsburg, and see them excavating. And you think, my God, it's only been 200, 300 years, but that doorway is four foot in the ground. And so you do get this buildup. And we have a couple of options. One is to come in with like a motor grader and just peel it off. Peel the turf and the grass off.
But that's peeling off Lisa's yard where it's up this high from the road.
Well, I have to be honest with you, I spent 30 minutes on the phone today with the lady that when we went in and peeled off the shoulder and recut the ditch, that she wore me out for 30 minutes on, but I can't mow my ditch anymore because it grasses in, grasses into swale and, you know, affects the water running off the road. And the drainage to take that water away. And so we know, unfortunately, we expect it, that when we do those kind of things, why did you do that? All of a sudden, it was fine until you did this. And now it's gonna take me five years to get the grass to grow and use my riding lawnmower in the ditch, so.
We don't know what you should do, but if we could get some type of, something in writing that says, well, what's going on here? This is not ours, this is not VDOT.
Okay.
This is property owners. Something that we can carry to the property owners, or maybe you'll find out that you need to do it all. You know, I don't know. I doubt it, but.
This is very informative. And, you know, we want solution number two with where Garth directed us. And that is to actually patch over it and bring the road up about that much. And then the water ran off the road. So you don't have ponding in the road. Because that's our charge. You get ponding in the road, you're gonna have road deterioration. And you're gonna have to come back and patch it, and you're gonna have to try to deal with that. Got a neat little brochure on drainage. Generally speaking, to us, we operate within the right of way granted by the county when the roads were turned over to VDOT for maintenance. A lot of places, we've only got 30 feet of right of way by prescription. In Urbana, it's a platted, a platted town. So when the turnover of the local roads to VDOT in the mid, late 30s, we accepted maintenance within that right of way of those assets, which generally is gonna be the road, the shoulder, and any ditching. And they, those are our assets and our only assets. And we all know that 25, 30% of the time, what's in the right of way doesn't drain to the river. That there are outfalls that are cutting through people's yards, down the gully, into the swamp, and these other things. And unless we have deeded right of way to maintain it, it's not ours to maintain. And very seldom do we have any deeded maintenance responsibility outside of our right of way. And in Urbana, it's between 40 and 50 feet generally, a strip that encompasses that road and some shoulder. And so we operate the drainage system to keep the road from flooding so that the traveling public can get from place to place. That's our primary charge. And the little brochure speaks to it in a number of ways, but that's probably pretty much it in a nutshell. Our roadside drainage is supposed to handle a two-year storm for the road.
So your charge is basically.
Not all the property drains to it.
Your charge is to get the water off the road, and if it's off the road, then you're done.
We're not the Department of Drainage. We're not the Virginia Department of Drainage. I don't think there is one, unfortunately.
Okay.
And so, you know, we try our best to maintain our assets within that right of way. And in the case of staying in water, instead of peeling shoulders, because people really do not like that. And it does take a while for it to re-vegetate and look pretty here. And so we utilize our patching contractor to, and we allocate about two days a year per county to utilize this patching contractor that we have. And we spent one day in Middlesex County, in Urbana, and some other locations on the second day. And tried to address exactly what we were, we looked at and agreed to with Mr. Wheeler. There's another document that I'm going to, if it's okay, email to the mayor. It's a Board of Supervisors manual that somebody smarter than me has put together for county boards and folks like that. And they used to print them and give them to us to hand out. Forget that, everything's electronic now, so I'll have to send you an electronic version of it.
Okay.
And it answers a huge variety of questions about how things operate, from how speed limits are set, what grants are out there, what you need permits for. And excellent source. In fact, mine is dog-eared and highlighted, and I carry it with me because it's an excellent source of information. But it will give you a lot about our organization and how we interact with local governments. I touched on most of the things I'd written down, but I would be more than happy to try to answer any questions or take questions down and get back to you, or those sorts of things.
I think you covered my questions. Anybody else?
Do you ever go out, once it's rained and it's like someone's got a problem with it, do you ever go out and look at it when it's flooded instead of just looking at it?
I try to. Again, it's 175 miles of roads all over, and so, but yes, we.
Like in Urbana?
We do, and more often than not, our focus is on the primary roads versus residential roads. It doesn't mean we don't do it.
Can, if we wanted to have a speed limit changed, is that good of you?
It actually has to be approved of our traffic engineer, one person at the district.
I have a lot of complaints from the people that live over in Urbana Harbor. Their entrance to their little subdivision comes in onto the road there. And the speed limit's like 55 or something right there where they are, and it's way too high. They say they feel like they take their life in their hands when they pull it on that road.
That's true.
And they would like to have that done. And I'd say I'd try to find out how to do it.
Well, my best suggestion is to get the mayor to send me an email. And I say it was discussed at the town council meeting.
Yeah, that's.
It was outside of our, it's outside of town.
It's outside of our jurisdiction.
Well, it didn't matter, you know, I just need something.
It's like when you cross the bridge.
Need something to go on.
Yeah. They immediately go, as soon as they get across the bridge, everybody just guns it and they go, wow.
Well, it's terrible to.
I've never seen anybody go actually 35 across the bridge, by the way. Including me.
What about speed bumps? Do y'all take care of speed bumps if we had, what's the proper way to go about that?
You really can't get there.
Nope.
We do have some of my other peers, I hate it when they make it sound like you can do this, because it's known as a traffic calming measure.
Right, traffic calming, right.
And we have a book on them and how they have to be. And there's no more bumps, but there are speed tables and things that cost a lot of money to put in. And we don't, we don't do it. It has to, it would have to be generated by the local jurisdiction and funded by the local jurisdiction as well.
Even though it's your road?
Yes.
I called Madeline a couple of years ago about having speed bumps put in. And not only do they create a hazard.
Yes.
But that's also for rescue and snow plowing that they won't put them in. Because somebody called me back from VDOT, so.
And there's a lot of the reasons. And, you know, if we have a speed limit posted at 25, and you ride across it at 30 and tear your axle out because of a bump, we're liable. And so I guess that kind of lends to.
I see a lot in Richmond in the neighborhoods, they have those little speed bumps that you can remove. Speed tables. So.
You know how some of these things get out there on state roads or non-state roads?
There's some up behind the firehouse.
Yeah. I mean, if you got, if it's a private road and a private subdivision, you can do what you want there because they're not state roads. The city of Richmond as a city operates their own road system. Our central office pays them to manage their own road system, and they do. And they're empowered to implement speed tables, and there are some in Richmond and some of the smaller, older neighborhoods. And they are posted at 15, which Richmond is able to do because they operate and maintain the state system for the state. And there's signs everywhere, warning signs for, even in those circumstances, for the motoring public to know that, you know, get off your cell phone. If you're going 25 miles an hour, you're gonna hit the speed table. And they do kind of rattle your teeth, so. To me, to make a long story short, it's almost impossible to get there, generally speaking. Because, you know, of our minimum posted speed is 25.
Okay.
I don't think the people of Middlesex realize how fortunate we are to have the residency in Saluda. The amount of people has employed from Middlesex County for generations. And I don't know how it happened, except probably a guy named Santos, who was Attorney General of Virginia, was from Saluda.
Okay.
In the 1940s. And maybe that's how we got it. But we, you know, it's a real plus for the county that you hold there. We appreciate all you do.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, we've grown as a, we had a blueprint before my time with VDOT. And has some reorganization, and Saluda gained King William and Essex Counties. Saluda had four counties up into the blueprint of about 15 years ago. Saluda had four counties up until the blueprint of about 15 years ago. And added those two counties and shut down a Bowling Green office. And, but, we love it here. And, you know, feel free to give me a call.
Give that 800 number.
Oh, well, well, I mean, if, the best way to report a pothole in front of your house is for you to call one 800 number, give them your name and phone number and your address. And these people are pretty good at the customer service center. They might ask you, is it the size of a basketball? Or, you know, trying to get an idea about what it is. And then they key it in, it's electronic, it's generated, goes straight to the headquarters for them to call you and, and, you know, try to resolve the issue. So that's, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks for taking your time.
Not a problem, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
All right, next item, we have the minutes from August 10th and August 24th.
I make a motion to-
Yes, could I have a motion?
To approve the minutes from-
The 12th and the-
The 12th and the 22nd.
Is that right?
August 10th and August 24th.
August 10th, August and August 24th as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All right, Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mary Hansen?
Yes.
I say yes. Larry Chuting?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
All right, those are approved. And next, we go on to reports. With mine, you'll be happy after the time we're moving on so far. I don't have that much to say. Something that, I don't know if I showed this last time, but on Google, there were, Michelle downloaded this, I think, 600,000 views of our VDOT. There's multiple projects that are in different stages. A lot of that is going to be covered with the different reports from the, from the other committees and whatnot. Interestingly enough, somebody locally read the Sentinel article about the fact that we were looking at security cameras. And somebody who works along the Eastern Seaboard going from Philadelphia down to Newport News has a relative in town, and he reached out and said, can we bid on that project? So M3T is gonna give us a number there, too. I have had more conversations with the two companies that visit us, have no bids to relay at this point. I also got a cold call, and the information is in your packet, but it's sort of interesting with respect to talking about short-term rentals. There's some at the back of the room. But it is this thing that's back there. There was a company called Placer. And this guy Kyle Miller asked me if there was a big event in town. I talked about Oyster Fest, and it's hard to see unless you have it in front of you. But he basically drew the roadway for Rappahannock going from Manor Road down to Virginia Street, and Virginia Street going down to the Waterway. And before my very eyes, he gave us a printout of people that showed up in that space over a one-year period of time. And you can see where Oyster Fest is. And this is something that's both, to me, fascinating, but also scary in that he's also able to give the incomes, education lover level, demographics of where they come from, what places they visited. It's just an incredible amount of information. I did a screenshot when he was given the demonstration of the town and where we came from. But I called him back and said, it'd be really nice if I could present a picture of where they came from in the United States. Like I said, there's some more copies back there, which is the last page, as well as where we are locally. And, you know, the average distance that people covered to, to get here, et cetera. And what it does is it corroborates, actually, with something that Michelle pulled up, which was, what year was this, Michelle?
1997.
1997, an Oyster Fest thing that was done showing where people came from. And the truth is, most of the people that are here for Oyster Fest are coming from Richmond, from the Northern Neck, or from, like Newport News and north. We get few people from Fredericksburg or farther north. We get few people from Richmond and farther west. We don't get very good coverage down into Virginia Beach. And so, when it comes to, as we talk about tourist attraction, one of the things I think we have to be mindful of is the fact that if we want people to experience Urbana, they need places to stay because when they show up, and that's another thing that shows in this, in this Placer product, is that they're coming here for the day, but they're staying in Tappahannock, they're staying in Gloucester, they're staying in Richmond, or the Tides Inn. And so, they don't get the full benefit of being here because of accommodations. So anyhow.
There are a lot of RVs. There are a lot of RVs.
Well, yeah, that, that's for Oyster Fest, but for the rest of the year. And when you look at the distribution, something that was pretty unusual is, for some reason, at the end of February, there was something that was a peak that-
We think that was the chili cook-off?
Oh, the chili cook-off.
The chili cook-off, okay. There, there you go, okay. But I, I thought it was fascinating data, and I also found it very disturbing that, just with cellphone pings, that they could get that much information. And, and he could bring it up, he could bring it up in a 20-minute conversation.
That's how Virginia Tourism relies on this.
Yeah, I, I'm sure that, he said there's other companies out there, but I was gonna give this to Louie Lawrence at the meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay, good.
Because I'll, I'll bet, when I asked him what it was gonna cost, because I said, you know, we could probably find $1,000, $2,000 to have access to that, but if it's much more than that, it's not gonna be for us. And he said, well, it is gonna be more than that, so. At any rate.
But again, that's something, because the data that Virginia Tourism collects are the same things, and it is collected by cellphone. And so, it may not be as much specific about Urbana because it's only certain points in Urbana that are actually listed and that they actually collected data from. We could do a better job of identifying what those points are so that we could collect more of the data that we want. And we can get that for free through Virginia Tourism.
Right.
And we can tell them that. We can tell them that we want data collected on this location, and that location, and another location. Because they've just kind of defaulted to whatever, like they've got Bethpage, they've got the Marina, they've got the Scottish Factor Store, and that's like it. And they've got a couple of random places. But we can actually ask them to start collecting that information.
Right. And with this company, they could tell you how many people visited something different.
It's incredible, yeah, it's incredible.
And the fact that, that that stuff is out there for the taking from cellphone data-
Wow.
That's just right there is, you know, it didn't identify me by name, but it identified Don Dreher, so.
Wait, was Anya in it? How many giant schnauzers have visited?
Yeah, there he is.
Yeah, I didn't ask the question, but it's a fair question. I, I have a follow-up call with him on Monday to relay the fascination that people had in the meeting. So at any rate, the last thing that I had is that, thanks to the Oyster Fest people, we do have permission to use the oyster logo on our new street signs, as I produced that. And so, in talking with the company that's closest down in Yorktown, I hope to have a sample of something to look at at the next meeting so we can get a final price. We've got somebody that's interested in taking the old ones out and putting the new ones in, which is as much of a, that's, that's more of a hassle than actually getting the signs. There's plenty of people that do the signs. And that's, that's what I've got. Moving on, Treasurer's Report.
As per published, just a few side comments. The C&amp;F pool funding checking that was open, that was open prior to the UBI coming into play. So I will be closing that account. There's no need to continue to have that. Currently, in the Treasurer's world, I spent the past two days on business licenses for the Urbana Oyster Festival. And I have them all entered. I just need to verify and double-check myself. I did receive the tax file from the county. So I have an appointment for the 19th with the software folks to help me bring that file in. And then I will start to process real estate and personal property taxes. And the, my revenue note, the C&amp;F was really nice. It produced $2,656 of interest for the building fund. So that was from the sale of Old Town Hall.
Right.
And we parked it for a short, a short-term product. And it produced rather well for us.
Excellent. And I checked at the labor fund balance today online, and it is down from the 877 to about 854,000. But the market's been kind of squirrely. The good news is that the stuff we moved into is still up about 4%, 4.5%. So diversification wins. Anything else on that? We good? All right. Next, Pool Committee. Barbara? Yep, oh, no, up there, please.
Okay, this will be short and sweet. Roy actually sent out a little report, and I took what he gave us. Plus, I went over there and trespassed this afternoon to see for myself what's going on. So the progress seems to be speeding up as we near the projected completion date, which is good. The black fence around the pool complex is nearly complete. The gray siding on the bathhouse is nearly complete. It kind of ends where the arches begin because you can see, they're gonna have to do some special cutting and stuff for that. So I guess they did the easy part first. We do have a young volunteer painter lined up to paint the snack shack to match. I think his mother is twisting his arm as she's asking for a, a small section of the siding to match the paint.
And I got that this afternoon.
You got it this afternoon, there you go. Okay, so the interior, I snuck into the bathhouse. The interior of the bathhouse is nearing completion. The walls and doors are painted, the floor is all done. The vanities are in, the dividers are in, the doors are not on the stalls yet, and the toilets are not in yet. But basically, it's looking pretty darn good. We expect the pool, I guess, weather permitting and all other things, expecting the pool to be filled October 18th after they do the walls and the bottom of the pool, and there's a special plaster coating. And I understand the reason for that is, it has to be filled within a certain amount of time after they lay that product in there to make sure that it is uncorrupted. And let's see. I understand, and I guess Bill or someone else will have to tell us about this, that progress has been made regarding the pool cover and landscaping around the catchment pond. And I was watching this afternoon, they had their big, big ol' scooper dirt, and they're working on the catchment pond right now, so. There's still other work to be done, but now we have visibly measurable progress. Okay?
Good, thank you. Sandy, Project Funding?
Yeah, trying to figure out how to pay for it. All right, we have pledges. I'll go through them separately. We've got 10,000 pledge from the Bristow family. We've got 15 from the Montague family. Then we have another 10 from two separate people living in town. We have deposited into the UBI account $43,500. That was as of yesterday. We sent out 300 mailers. Did you get one mail, Mr. Mayo? You did. Have you sent it back yet? Okay, but we have gotten good response from that. And we've gotten checks from $1,000 for one person down to 50. And so, that was good.
And the mailers just went out, right?
Yeah, the mailers just went out. So we sent out, what, 300 or some mailers? And I've written personalized letters to a lot of people. And they had good response from that. I have not heard from Dave Cryer. I hope that he will come through with some money. So then we have, what, 42,000 that has gone for the permanent memberships, lifetime memberships, and that go into the account to-
Yeah, the charter memberships.
The charter memberships?
I know of three.
Three.
Right.
Three of 12,000 each.
Oh, so that's 36, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I think that's pretty good for a short period of time.
Yes.
Yeah, good job.
Good job, Sandy.
So how long before the pledge money is, is due?
Well, I know that Mr. Bristow said he'd bring his in on the 10th. And we had a matched Montagues, it was a matching funds, and we have matched it. And I told him we had matched it, and so he should give us his check now. But he wouldn't release his check until we had raised another 15. So they will be good.
Roy, Water Committee Report?
Nothing much, other than the well, as I've said before, has been drilled completely, well number one. And it's a very productive well, which is very fortunate for us because USDA, who is lending us the money on the 40-year term, said they wouldn't pay for a dry hole. So we don't have a dry hole, and we're not looking at trying to pay $600,000 back, nothing. But at any rate, it's done. The land up on the hill has been graded, and grass will be growing, so it's gonna start to look nice. If anybody would like to drive up there, I invite you to go up, and you will see a white pipe sticking up out of the ground. And that's our $600,000 well. That's Phase 1. Phase 2 will require us to put a pump that goes down into the well and the associated plumbing that goes over to the pump house. That has yet to be bid, but we, we have enough funds included in the USDA loan to take care of that. So all of that is on target. And that's basically what's happening with the well, or the water situation. Water continues to flow, people continue to use it. We're gonna use water from our system to fill up the pool so we don't have to pay for water for the pool. And that's about it.
Yeah, and so far, we're on point with the budget, right?
Oh, yeah.
There've been no real surprises on that, which is good. And the same, really, is the truth for the pool. We've thrown a few things in, which there were. If, if council and our audience remembers, we were afraid that there might be some structural instability in the soil, that we'd have to do extra supports for pouring the concrete, and that was gonna be a major uh-oh. But that did not happen, and so that was really good news that the soil supported the, the pouring of the, of the pool. All right, Mary, Planning Commission?
Planning Commission met on Tuesday, Tuesday evening. And we have ongoing, ongoing, various on, ongoing issues. We welcomed Louis Hall as new member to, so we are fully staffed up on Planning Commission now, which is great. We discussed and reviewed revisions to the comprehensive plan pertaining to the Chesapeake Bay Act portion of it, the requirements related to that. We have a legal mandate to have that finished and into law not later than December 31st. So we're, you know, and Roy has worked very, very hard on that. We had some delays. He was working with Department of Environmental Quality and one of, and their representative that represents Urbana is a liaison for Urbana. A lot of back and forth. We got slowed down with getting adequate maps. You know, there were a lot of moving parts to it, but we're there. And that is a later item on the agenda tonight. And so, there's that. And that's been something we've been chipping away at for two years because it's supposed to be updated, I think, every two years, and it had not been updated since 2012.
Wow.
Yeah, so anyway, there, there was a lot of detail about Urbana's effort to annex various lands from Middlesex. And there was a lot of stuff that just needed to be knocked there. So anyway, so that's been an ongoing project. We, we reviewed and discussed the- We reviewed and discussed the proposed changes to the B1 ordinance further, talked further about our discussions that we've been having for months on short-term rental ordinance proposed revisions. That's, both of those matters are on the agenda for tonight as well. We talked about upcoming issues, and an upcoming matter coming to Harb that could end up coming to the planning commission for a special use permit. The progress on the street sign project that Don Drayer has been so steadfast with, what's the latest with the street sign project? And we're finally, finally going to get that to happen. And I think that really caps off what we did on Tuesday night, okay? We did not have a September meeting, because we had so many things in the works that needed to happen at the very long October meeting that we had. So anyway, that's it, I think, for planning commission.
Public comment? Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
320 Rappahannock.
320 Rappahannock, William Mayo. I got a problem with old business. For the last three years, old business, nobody says a word. We got, I worked his hand parts off on this kayak trail. When's the last time we discussed that? Last September, a year ago. What's been done about it?
Fair question.
It is.
So we did get the kayak rentals placed down there, so that we would have access to, for people to have access for that trail, the rental thing down there.
Another thing is the floating dock. Six months ago, everybody said, yes, we're going to get this floating dock from Christ Church for $30,000. I haven't seen it yet. We go wait for us, first we get here, so Joe Hammers Group can bring it up. They'll be using it every year.
It's across at the, at the, at the Christ Church Bo yard.
I know, but it's not at the dinghy dock. It's supposed to be at the dinghy dock. You go pay that much money for it, it should be for us to be using it.
Right.
Okay. I got one other thing here. Oh, the dock on the left-hand side of the marina is, who's looking after that, seeing when it's supposed to be done, when we go put a floating dock so our kayaks can get out? We discussed that six months ago.
The living shoreline and the repairs to the piers on that end are scheduled to be repaired after Oyster Fest. I've talked to the people at docks in the bay to get that done. The floating docks are in the next big grant, and so that's, that's, it's going to have to be scheduled for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Billy, let me address that kayak thing. You're right, it's been up, but it's almost impossible to access. There's only one way to access it, and that's through the district...
Middle Peninsula Plant District.
Middle Peninsula Plant District Commission. It's not on our website, how to access it? And one of the things in talking to Kurt Smith last week is that the mayor and myself need to get together, and council, and need to determine and establish a way in which we can get it on our own website. We have, we have somebody hired that does our website.
Right.
And so I don't think it's that much of a deal. But when this thing came up, and I asked for signage to go down there, I was told that we had to wait until the big grant, money for a sign, which is utterly ridiculous, but that's what I was told. And so we're at a point now where, on the Middle Peninsula Regional Planting District website, it's easier to access it than it was two weeks ago, and people are using it.
Yeah, I mean, we had a discussion for two and a half hours on kayaks in here one night. And I asked, we expected to get 300 or 400 kayaks a day?
Yeah.
You know, and you'd be lucky if you seen three this summer.
And there's no signage. So for people, and there's, there's nothing, I don't think, in any of our promotional anything that says that we have this incredibly unique recreational resource for people to benefit from. So it's not marketed, it's not, it's a shame. The other thing is, is with the kayak rentals, and I mentioned this before, I was concerned about the location of the kiosk, and now it is dwarfed by piles of kayaks. I don't, are they Christ Church kayaks? Whose kayaks are they? They're not the ones on the racks.
They got, they got the addresses all.
Oh, do they? And the ones that are just stacked in the pile on the ground?
Yeah.
So that you can't, I don't think you could even pull one of those kayaks out if you rented it. So I don't know what the deal is, but A, I don't think it's a good location for the kiosk, and B, I think it's a shame. I also asked Garth in July, I think, if he could ask for data from the company, from Paddle On, we have no idea how much is being used. And we never got that, we still don't have it. Sorry, Bill, to add that to your list.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But Paddle On, yeah.
Yeah, I'll get the number off the thing and get them a call Monday.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure it's an easy, an easy answer for them, but it would be great to have that information.
And if the, if the numbers are on the kayaks, we'll get them to move them so that they're not blocking.
Well, I'm hopeful by next spring, we will have this thing, so that when people drive down there, there'll be a signage dent, and this is where it starts. And also, I'd like to see somebody who's used to going on these things, go on it and say, oh, this is okay, or it's too busy, or it's, you know, to tweak it, you know, to make it so that it's usable.
Talk with, talk with Gary Lister. She has had a couple of guests from the inn who have used it, and I think had some comments.
That's what sparked me to go out and talk to Kurt Smith, and it is usable.
Yes.
They were able to use it.
Yes, they were able to use it.
And I will ask Dave Lipscomb to find the, to put a link to the Middle Peninsula and have it on our, on our page.
What it took was, is I had to go out and sit down with Kurt Smith. He had to call Gary. I said, don't tell me how to do it. I'm not going to be able to tell Gary. He had to call her, and he worked, he worked her through it, and she was able to do it. But that's not what we need.
Well, that doesn't promote it, it doesn't make it, I mean, if you've got a sign down there, people go, oh, I'm going to come back and do that, you know? They, it's, it's, I think it's really important to have that.
Well, I think the point is, the infrastructure is there to make it all better. And we just need to...
Don't even have a sign.
Good. Now I got something to do.
It's just not put up.
Thank you. Bringing it in.
All right. Mr. Putney?
And Mr. Mayor, can I ask that council not respond to Mr. Putney till he's finished with his things?
Okay.
Because it messes up his time.
It cuts into my time.
Yeah.
Tammy Putney, 36 Middle Lane, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council for the time. Billy must have been reading some of my notes over here. So I won't go into too much. But on the floating dock thing from Christ Church, I'd be willing to help if I can help get that here. I got a truck, trailer, lifts, I can help try to get that done. That was on, on my list, he must have read my note there. And on the kayak thing down there, yeah, thanks, Billy. Yeah, a couple of them I cut around today, which I cut every Fri, Thursday or Friday, and they just multiply. Add on the blow-up dinghies, they're all out there, deflated, and quite frankly...
Yeah, I ask about...
They quite frankly look like crap. And the kayaks, people have spray painted there, it's a couple from Colorado, addresses on there, and I'm thinking, and it's a boat on a trailer. They moved some of those inflatable dinghies back on the backside, but they're all, anyway, it looks horrible. The other thing, talked about security cameras for the Water, the Waterman's Park. I personally don't think they're going to work. I'd be happy to talk with somebody, I have some ideas. I've spent some time down there in the middle of the night looking.
Me too.
And cameras aren't going to work. You guys don't have time to sit there and timestamp it. I've got them in a little league park, and the only way I know anything goes on, if I go there the next day, and there's trash everywhere, or burnout marks, and then I go looking for, looking through the tapes, hours of tapes. You guys don't have time for that. So I'd be willing to help, I got a couple ideas to help with that, and I'd be happy to help try to get the floating docks, if I can bring them in, put them on a trailer, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
The white boats, blow-ups, or whatever it is that you're talking about, I have questioned that and was told it was going to be taken care of, but...
Yeah, Joyce said she was going to...
Taken care of.
Yeah, because Marjorie had mentioned it to me, and I had a conversation with Joyce, but I have to admit that I didn't follow up on it.
Yeah, I heard that. But they keep coming.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot that needs to be done, and very few people to do a lot, so.
Enforcement.
Michelle?
Through the Marine Legacy Program this past week, and all there have been, I think they're fourth grade and seventh grade, but these are children that would normally not have access to the water. So all the additions, and they've been going and taking them out on boat rides, and access to the kayaks and all, so maybe, question mark, the extra kayaks at this time are from all the kids that have been being bused in to experience the Marine Legacy. They haven't moved?
Neither have those buoy boats, or whatever they're called.
Yeah.
That's possible. I mean, it's just, there are ways to, if we think about it, we can just sort it out somehow. Don't want to deprive the kids from a waterfront experience, but it doesn't have to be blocking.
Right.
Next, we're moving on to old business. The first thing is the Chesapeake Bay Act addendum that we have to get in. The process is, we need to refer this to the planning commission to have a public hearing on. As Mary said, this is something that has been worked on for the last couple of years. It has been tweaked with ongoing and repetitive conversations that Mr. Kime has had with the DEQ personnel. And it would be my recommendation that we submit it as submitted here, because if we tweak this at all, it has to go back through DEQ.
Right.
And that's a nightmare. They have signed off on it, they were the last stumbling block, if you will. And so now it needs to be advertised, so that we can move it forward and get it approved by the end of the year.
Well, I'll make a motion to refer the modification of the Chesapeake Bay Protection Act portion of the town's comprehensive plan to the planning commission.
Ms. Austin, does that also include the amendment to Section 17-410.11 of the town code?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
I decided I wasn't going to read that part.
Home plate, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Which is in.
All right. Marjorie Austin?
Yes.
Beth Justice?
Yes.
Larry Tuning?
Yes.
Bill Goldsmith says yes. Mary Hansen?
Yes.
Sandy Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now that this has been officially referred, I'd like to point out that the planning commission anticipated that it was going to be referred. They are required to have a public hearing to take public input on this, and anticipating that this was going to get referred, we have had newspaper ads in the last two newspaper editions that have set a public hearing for the planning commission for tomorrow morning, 9:00 to review this.
Just this?
Just this, nothing else. Once the planning commission has heard what the public has to say, has looked over things, they will make a recommendation back to council. Council then has to have its own public hearing, and after its public hearing, it can decide whether to vote for this or not. It would be, in my opinion, prudent to have council anticipate that the planning commission's going to approve this thing, recommend it, and so that you set up your own public hearing.
Oh, you didn't do that for us?
And I would think that you would set it up for, you know, 6:00 or 5:55, before your next meeting, so you could have the public hearing.
It would just be part of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
However you do it.
Part of the meeting.
Yeah.
We have to advertise it, don't we?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So just, you know, it's okay to advertise it, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, please.
I agree.
All right.
Yes, please.
When did the first ad run?
The first ad ran...
Last week? Or no, two weeks?
It was two weeks.
It ran the...
Yeah, I know, at least two weeks.
September, well, seven days before the 5th.
5th of October?
The 5th of October it ran, and then?
The 28th?
The 28th.
That doesn't meet the state law for advertising.
What doesn't it meet? For the public's hearing, for the planning service one?
Is it not one in today?
It has to be, the first ad, this is new, as of July 1, the first ad cannot be sooner than 14 days before the public hearing. So that's what I was looking...
It was, I'm pretty sure it was.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, I gotta go look at mine.
I think it was. If the 28th is two weeks from today, the, right?
No, if you're going back, you're going back, not forward.
Right, if the public hearing is on the 13th?
Right.
It has to be within 14 days of the 13th, which would be...
I think it would be 15 days.
The state law says 14.
Mm-hmm. How can you...
It has to only be 14? It can't be more than 14?
Right, the first ad.
How can we do that?
I mean, we can only do it on two days. There's going to be no way we can do that.
Right.
If everything has to be seven days apart to run it, we can't do it so that it's less than 14 days.
So does that include weekends, or just business days?
It's regular days. Let me double-check it with my...
Oh, business days, not, not...
No, no.
Okay, so...
All right, so October the 13th.
What's the same?
It ran the 9th, the 28th, September 28th, and October 5th.
And the 5th. Yeah, misses it by one day.
Well, there's no way...
So it just didn't want you to...
I'd just go ahead and do it. There's no way that you can run an ad for two weeks and have it less than...
It has to be exactly two weeks?
14.
No, it can't be more than two weeks, or it can't be less than two weeks.
But I think we're in a situation where we're one day more than two weeks, correct?
Well, there was a holiday.
The first ad...
There was a holiday.
There was a holiday.
It doesn't matter. The first ad has to be within 14 days of...
So it could be less than 14 days?
Yes, as long as you have time to get two ads in.
And we don't. The way we, the way...
It's a weekly newspaper.
Yeah.
People all over Virginia have been complying with this, so I'm sure there's a way that we can work this out.
Well, we're going to have our meeting tomorrow, and then we'll see whether it was legal.
But you can't have a meeting legally tomorrow.
We can't, if that's, if that's the case.
So...
Well, if she says we can look at it...
No, I said we can look at making...
We don't need to look at it, we need to, we need to have a public hearing, right? That's what we need.
We'll pick a date, we'll set it, we'll figure out the advertising. The ads run on Thursdays, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
They cut it on Wednesday.
But how in the world are you going to do it? If it can't be...
You'd have to have the meeting on the same day as the ad.
Yeah.
You're going to have to write it in a daily paper.
Right. Oh.
You have a daily paper.
Well, we'll work out the logistics, okay?
Okay.
Richmond Times Dispatch.
Yeah, Richmond Times Dispatch.
News Leader, I mean, the...
Daily Press.
The other thing that I'll just share with everyone, you know, there was a big study commissioned that studied all of the advertising and notice requirements, because they were going to make them better.
Oh.
And the other, they changed the language substantially. And the other, they changed the language substantially. The other thing that they put in there is they frame it as something like, within fourteen days of the date that the body takes action, which means, as local government attorneys read it, that if, like, the Planning Commission met after it was advertised and then didn't make a decision, it then has to be re-advertised. So?
That's what we need to talk about.
So, so?
Eligible to not do this.
Yeah, so when we get this, when we get this back?
I'm sorry, they have more changes they're putting in for this year, because there are local governments that have issues with some of them.
So?
Like this?
Yes, so we're going to figure out a way to advertise it and have it within fourteen days.
Mm-hmm.
Now, could it be on day two? No, it has to be advertised twice?
Yeah.
Okay, so it could be on day eight, or it could be on day nine, and so how is that going to impact our, our bringing this back?
It's fine. We have until December thirty-first, right?
But, but bringing it back in November?
Mm-hmm.
Because then there has to be a public hearing?
Right.
Based on bringing it back to council in November?
There'll be enough time.
Yeah, we got enough time.
There's plenty of time before our next meeting to get our advertisement?
And due.
Yes.
And due.
That advertisement and this advertisement in.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have to have an advertisement for the Planning Commission, and you're gonna have an advertisement?
Right.
For the town council.
Right.
And if you go away from the weekly newspaper, it's going to be expensive.
I know, that's true.
Very expensive.
We, you know, we can?
Wow.
It's a, I, I guess, when the Planning Commission has its, then the next thing we should do is time it so that the public hearing be part of the meeting, so that it's on the fourteenth day, right?
For the November meeting?
That's just, can we figure out the logistics?
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can do that, okay.
All right.
Okay, so we're not doing that. We're not having a meeting.
Moving on.
Well, it's been referred, so that's good.
Okay.
Yeah. That's A. All right. Next item is going over the B one zoning ordinance in that there's discrepancies that are in there that I think we need to clean up. One is, if you look under permitted uses, number two is virtually identical to the special use, permitted use, that's twenty-two, in that one says arts, cultural, and historic institutions, including museums and tourist information and orientation facilities.
Where, are, where are you?
This is on, on the B one?
Twenty-two is nurseries.
Yeah, where? In it, where in the?
On, on permitted uses, number two.
Permitted, let us find it.
Section seventeen dash four.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay.
So, the second page of the handout.
Second page. And then if you go to twenty-two on the special uses, institutions, educational, philanthropic, including museums, libraries, and art galleries.
Just delete that out.
Twenty-two, where?
On, on the, under special use.
Page thirty-five.
On page, yeah, that says page thirty-five.
Page thirty-five.
Don't go by the pages.
Well, it says thirty-five on it.
Oh, it does, it does.
It does.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
And so one of those needs to?
Needs to go?
Delete twenty-two.
So, we're going to have it by right?
Yeah, it's a question of whether you need a special use permit, which has to go through a public hearing, and it has to go through a whole variety of things?
Right.
In order to get it, versus being able to do it by right, just without any special permits, so?
Your point is that two and twenty-two are redundant?
They conflict with each other. One says you can do it by right, and the other says you have to have a special use permit.
Yeah.
We have several, we have several litigations.
I see, okay.
You got museums in both, tourist information in both.
Right, yeah.
So, the question is, do we want it to be special use permit, or do we want it to be by right?
Well, and, and which?
In B one.
There's a bunch of uses listed. Arts, cultural, historic institutions, museums?
Yeah.
Right.
Tourist information?
Right.
Orientation facilities.
I think it needs to be by right. I don't think you need a special use, because we already have a museum.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it being by right, I just, we gotta strike one of them.
Delete twenty-two.
Page thirty-five, number twenty-two.
Okay, so we'll?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, on, and these are just, you know, my particular items, but if you go to number sixteen on by right, it's hotel motel inn lodge or tourist home having less than five rooms for use by transient boarders.
What number are you on? I'm sorry?
That's on page thirty-two that's marked, that's the second page of the, or third page of?
Thank you.
It's number sixteen, and if you go to by special use permit, number twenty-one over on that page thirty-five, just above the hotel?
Yes.
Is hotel motel motor lodge tourist home having less than five rooms available for rent?
Or lease.
Or lease.
Uh-huh.
So, one of those has to go. So, the question is, do we want hotels to require a special use permit? And I, I would think that that would be the way to go.
Yes.
So, too.
Really, yeah, delete sixteen.
And so, we want to delete number sixteen?
On page thirty-two.
Yes.
Okay. We good with that?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, and then on the wording, if you go to the state code, hotel motel inn lodge or tourist home having less than five units, the state code defines hotel as all of those things being two or more units.
What section are you looking at?
What's that?
Of the state code?
Section seventeen point four point six point three.
I sent you that link in an email today.
I think.
But I've got it here.
No.
You don't have it. It's a state code, but?
We don't have that.
Uh, no, 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 state, state code under definitions twelve, VAC five dash four thirty-one dash ten.
That's the town code.
No, that's, this is the state administrative code.
Oh, that's regulations.
Yeah, regulations, state, the administrative code, yes, okay. If you go to?
Okay, hold on.
It says hotel means any establishment offering to the public for compensation transitory lodging or sleeping accommodations overnight, or otherwise including but not limited to facilities known by varying nomenclatures or designations as hotels, motels, travel lodges, tourist homes, or hostels, and similar facilities by whatever name called that consist of two or more lodging units.
What is the section again, please?
In the administrative?
I had to log on to?
Twelve, twelve, VAC five dash four thirty-one dash?
No.
Okay, that, that doesn't apply.
Okay.
Why?
It's the Department of Health.
Why?
And what we would be looking for is something from zoning. They are defining a hotel or whatever it is, I'm sorry, I kept asking you right, because I did. They're defining it for purposes of what the Department of Health regulates. It's not intended as a, an overall definition?
A definition.
Of hotel or whatever for the whole state code.
Okay, but if you call it a hotel, if you run a hotel, you have to be inspected by the Department of Health, right?
Right.
Okay.
That doesn't mean the definition applies.
Right.
Okay, but when we're writing the ordinance, shouldn't we have our definition comply with their definition?
Why?
No?
I guess, the, the question that we had when we were looking at these discrepancies, where, you know, in one section, one part, it was by right, and in another, it was by special use permit, and we were wondering how they were defined, and we had difficulty. The only place that we were really able to find a definition was in the administrative code, which you say doesn't apply because it's for the very specific purpose of?
Yes.
Yeah, the health department. So, if there's?
No definition, then it's, is it as, as defined by the locality? Yes.
Oh.
Bingo!
Ah.
She wins! Ding 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 ding.
Then we have to define it, because?
Okay.
And, and if you?
There is a, there is a potential for someone calling a tourist home?
Yes.
Anything, one unit, any place.
Right, and if it's less than, and, and where you run into difficulty, if it says less than five, there's no bottom limit, and so?
That's right.
Anybody that's currently by right in B one?
Right.
Can have a short-term rental?
And call it a tourist home.
As a single unit, and call it a?
A tourist home.
Somebody needs to make a call during the town office to Tappahannock, to Wausau, to wherever?
We have talked?
Find out what these other communities are doing.
We have talked to all of them.
Well, what are they doing?
On this particular one, that is one thing we have not asked them about, but we have talked a lot about the short-term rental issue.
Well, you need to ask them about that. But I certainly not going to vote on something until?
Well, if we're?
Right, we're not voting.
We're not voting.
If we're responsible for the definition, we have to decide, if, if we leave it as a less than five, if we leave it as a less than five, well, if, if, actually, if we put it as a spec, for special use, if we take it out of by right and put it to special use, then it, it allows us to have more flexibility?
Right, that's what we should do.
Then it bleeds over into the short-term rental law.
Yes, right.
If we leave it by right, then it completely defeats our short-term rental.
Totally defeats it.
If, if council can articulate what you would like to see in an ordinance, I can work with Roy and we can put that together, rather than you researching and just, what do you want it to say? What do you want the rule to be?
Well, I think that's part of, though, what we were wondering is what's reasonable? What is commensurate with what other localities around us? How do they define that?
Define what?
Define a hotel motel inn motor lodge tourist home, primarily the tourist home, having less than five rooms, is what it currently says.
It's going to vary from locality to locality?
Yeah.
But their definitions should be in every code, which I can?
Okay.
I mean, if you want me to pull that together for you?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, please.
A five-room?
Do you want just surrounding localities, or?
What are we talking about here?
We're talking about what is on our ordinance?
Yes.
You know, how it got there, that's, that's a different issue.
So?
We have it in by right and by special use, that's another issue.
Probably one of those things that came in during the time when Beth's family had a boarding house, when there were, there were more B and Bs, there were those kinds of things, and I think those definitions probably make sense during that time, but that's not the time we're in anymore. But I do want to ask, is would this, yes, it would be good to have Andrea and Roy work on definition, but would this simply be cured by our deleting?
Right.
These, the by right, which is number sixteen, and going with what twenty-one says?
And they'd eliminate tourist homes from twenty-one completely.
Right. I don't, I don't know.
Nobody knows what a tourist home is.
No, nobody knows what a tourist home is. There's just, there's not even a definition.
My recollection is, this is one of those places where there was a house and then a bunch of cabins that were along the side of the road, disappeared in nineteen sixty.
So, are you?
Andrea, I'm going to ask you for your opinion on, on, on our, on our way to, to resolve this, because we can't refer it to the Planning Commission tonight.
Oh, no, no, we weren't going to do that.
What you want to do? What do you want to do? Do you want research on what other people do, or do you want?
I think we want our own.
Yeah.
Okay, and then what do you want it to say?
Will we just eliminate the word tourist home?
Well, see, I, I think that's less important?
That's way less important, yeah.
I think it should, I think it should be in the by special use?
Yes.
And that it should be two or more units.
I think so, too.
Because that protects the short-term rental law.
It does.
Well, the way that this works is that the short-term rental is in a, it's got a separate section, as I recall.
It does.
And so, really, short-term rentals should be governed by that section.
Right.
Well, yes, but what's happening is there are people who are trying to do a workaround from the short-term rental, because it's not allowing them to do what they want to do, and so they're, they're relying on by right, item sixteen, to run what they're calling a tourist home. So?
I've not heard anybody doing that yet.
Well, there is, there is. We've had a lot of fun the last month, let me tell you.
Okay.
Yeah. So, that's the thing, we want to protect our short-term rental. We don't want to have a, a disagreement in our code. And right now, we've got a disagreement.
Right.
It's by right and it's by special use permit.
And part of the solution is going to be to move it from by right to by special use permit?
Yes, right.
But establishing the number, the minimum number?
A minimum of two, that differentiates it from short-term rentals?
Correct.
So, there can't be confusion.
So, tourist homes are by right?
And?
It's one section of the ordinance, but in the by special use permit, it's in there as a by special use permit.
So, what you're?
So, we got to get rid of the by rights on it.
Yes, right, yes. But I think the definition, I'm in agreement with the definition of two or more.
So, what you're doing by doing that is the black building on cross would have to, if he wanted to operate that, not as an Airbnb, but as a?
Tourist home.
Tourist home, or whatever you guys are calling it, he would need a special use permit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You good with that?
Yep, just, just making sure that?
Andrea, Andrea?
My brain was working like the rest of you.
What do you think?
We aren't either. It's, it's a, there's not a definition.
It's a term of art.
We've looked for definitions.
It's probably a boarding house.
Well, you know, they?
I think, I think that's where it came from.
Yeah.
Hostages listed.
I think that's where it came from.
When the references were, were made, there were still probably some that were around. And, and my bet is that our ordinance was copied from somebody else.
We had boarding houses, we had boarding houses and?
Yeah.
Right.
In fact, we had many in town.
Yes.
Well, there, there are provisions in our code for boarding houses. It's described and defined and everything. Tourist homes are not defined.
Not defined, so?
That's right, so. And, you know, it's a question of, is a, can a one-unit place, wherever it is, this happens to be in B one?
Okay, here's the definition for a tourist home. It is a private home or condominium that is not occupied by an owner or manager and is rented, leased, or furnished in its entirety to guests on a daily or weekly basis.
It's, it's a short-term rental.
It's an Airbnb.
Yeah.
But again, that depends on?
Who's definition is that? Is that in Virginia, Virginia definition?
Hell, it's a definition.
That's just a definition's a definition, I mean?
Yeah.
It's not the definition we want.
Yeah.
Or Ms. Google.
You know, I, I think that there was, it probably came in long before, even after World War Two, where, you know, if you traveled in Europe, you would stay at a pensioner. You would stay?
At a hostel.
At, at a, a home that rented out rooms and that sort of thing, and I think that was probably the model, but, yeah.
All right, so what are we doing about it?
Well, I think I, I think I understand the problem. The problem is, people are use, trying to use number sixteen under seventeen dash four point six point two to avoid going going through what's required for a short-term rental.
Right.
And you feel that there needs to be a definition, or a better definition, or a better set of terms that define places where transient people can stay. And you have suggested that a possible solution is to define those transient uses as things that have two or more units. I don't know that you have to do it that way. I think there might be another way to just, you know, say, you can have your definition and say, except for short-term rentals. Short-term rentals shall be governed by.
Right, absolutely.
Okay. If you could work on that, Andrea, that would be, that would be great. But it sounds like in general, we're in agreement with removing number 16 by right.
Yes.
And so now we're working on crafting a better replacement for number 22.
For the S U P.
The special use permit. Yeah, okay.
Does that affect, like in the 50s and 60s, when, when Maggie Hogg's husband dashed away and she was trying to support herself?
Yes, yes.
So right down Wildland Street, she started renting the rooms upstairs, the dramas that came in. I mean, is that?
Yes, that's exactly it.
Does that affect this?
Um, that is an example, that is an example of this.
Of a tourist home.
Yeah, of a tourist home.
So we'll still have a, tourist home will be in the code, but it will not be by right?
Yes.
Won't be by right.
I don't, I don't know that tourist home is a phrase that should be kept.
I don't either.
It's such an outdated term.
Yeah, because that was in the 50s and 60s.
I think that's outdated also.
That's a, in a different, there is a specific section of the code on boarding houses.
What we're running into now is it's, it's not a handicapped person that, that is trying to make a living. We've got people that, that, for instance, are buying homes in town and renting them. And also what they're doing with the one or two nights.
Right.
So it's, it's not like these people are possibly suffering. And they're doing this because they have to.
Yeah. No, it's a, it's a different, and when we go over the short-term rentals, we can, I can read again, I found the list of guiding principles that we have talked about for organizing kind of where we are so far with the changes to the short-term rental ordinance, because we really talked about, like for instance, for residents to be able to earn, earn income. You know, that, that is something that is something, you know, we want to be thoughtful about, but not outside corporations.
Well, I think maybe if I may say, with Larry, like hypothetically, you know, I'm hard on times and I have my house, I can rent a room out on a long-term basis.
Yeah.
And then that doesn't fall under the short-term.
Right.
That, that's the issue right now.
Thirty days or more is long-term.
But in the code, it spells out that that can be done.
Well, I think your question is, is we want to make sure that that kind of activity is protected.
Yeah.
So keep that in mind.
I got you. Just make sure it states that in the code.
We're on B1.
Okay.
We're still on B1.
We're still on B1.
And so I, did I summarize it correctly?
Yes.
And then, so I'll work with Roy and we'll send you something.
And we're going to, and we're going to get rid of 16, number 16 as a by right.
As a by right, right.
And the, the last thing that I had, because I think it's a conflict, is going back to by right, which is on the, what, you can barely see the 32, number nine is catering your delicatessen business, but to run a restaurant.
Wait, 32, I'm sorry, where?
By right.
Where it's a little number, 32, number nine, under by right, catering your delicatessen business.
Yeah.
Is by right.
Uh huh.
Okay? But restaurant is number 41 on the by special use permit, and you run into the same trap there, you could open up a delicatessen and, you know.
Is there a definitional difference?
And, you know.
Yeah, I think there, I think there is, but I'll, let me look at it.
Look at that.
And so the question is whether we want to move, you know, any food establishment like that to special use?
No, because some...
Or whether we want to move restaurants to by right?
And no, have we looked at what, we're on the re-codification, still have that proof?
We've looked at that.
Was, was any of that in there?
No.
So what, on the catering part, people could have a business from their home.
Right.
They can have a, you know what it's called, a something kitchen?
It's a...
Cottage kitchen.
Yes, yes.
And then they could get a permit to run that from their home to take out somewhere. I mean, not so much as...
They're just, they're limited to what they can do.
The catering, that's, that's...
Yeah, but to take out the other part about the deli, because you don't want, you don't want Justice's Deli, you know, three 26-hour schedule.
I'm on the right page.
Right, well, that's my, that's my point.
Thanks.
Not because your food is good, but we will, we will take it.
Cottage laws.
Yeah, the cottage laws would apply for that.
Right, so the, so the, that's my question, do we add restaurants to the by right, or do we take delicatessen out of the?
Okay.
Restaurant meaning brick and mortar, by right.
Our job, you know, is to do this for you.
Okay.
See what you can come up with.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just need to be quiet, move on, and you can take care of it?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, we're going to be quiet, move on.
All right. Anybody else got anything?
Mm mm.
All right. So. Now, on the short-term rentals.
Is this another be quiet, move on? Okay. Just checking.
Where are the results of the survey?
I have them. I hadn't been asked to bring them, and I did report them, and Tom reported them in the newspaper.
Can I, could you send them to me?
Of course.
Okay.
Yep.
And then my big question is, what problem are we trying to solve? Is it the one we just talked about with B1, where people are circumventing this? No. Okay.
Not, there are multiple problems.
Okay.
There are multiple problems.
The first thing is the town not being overtaken by short-term rentals.
Okay.
Can, can I read the principles that we're trying, because I think it will answer some of that?
Or, yeah, or can I get a copy of that too?
I can send that to you too, but just so that people know this, while we're, oh, come on, while we're, while we're discussing, while we're discussing it, that these were the principles that we researched from National League of Cities on their guidance on short-term rentals and through discussions.
Oh, I, I saw that.
And as a result, and as a result of the survey that we did. And we derived some guiding principles that we wanted to be considered for guiding changes to our short-term rental ordinance. And so these guiding principles, there are nine of them, they're pretty straightforward. I'll send them to anybody who wants them. We had them available earlier.
I think you sent them to me.
We did, yeah. Preserve the residential quality of neighborhoods, that's number one. Principle two, allow economic gain for residents. Principle three, support tourism in a balanced way. Principle four, protect the character of Urbana's historic area. Principle five, protect Urbana's small commercial footprint, that's become a big one for us. Principle six, prevent the loss of rental housing stock. Principle seven, balance the needs and rights of property owners and neighbors. Principle eight, ensure health and safety for guests and residents. And principle nine, protect against overgrowth of short-term rentals. So that's, those are the things that we, that, you know, that we've, we think that are values, that we need to have an ordinance that supports those values, Andrea.
Okay, but the problem is that there are too many. What problem are we trying to fix?
We have multiple problems that we're trying to fix. We, I'll just, and I'm going to be rambling because I hadn't prepared this.
That's okay.
In, in this way. We, you've got, we've got kind of four prongs that we're dealing with. One is your definitions, one is developing guiding principles, a third is developing an ordinance that support that, and the fourth is enforcement. We have, some of this is being driven by major enforcement problems, okay? And so we have major, major enforcement problems. We've got, it's an absolute monthly, monthly nightmare for Michelle because the...
No, I know about that.
You know about that, okay. So it's a nightmare for Michelle to figure out from the short-term rental companies who is actually, whose taxes are being paid and whose fees are being paid, because it runs through those companies to the town, but their reports don't say whose money is coming to the town.
Right.
So she has to try to puzzle all that together every single month.
That's not, that's not part of this.
No, it isn't, it isn't. Then we've got, we've got the problem of discovering that we have six or eight who are operating as short-term rentals with no permit and nothing. And so there have been initial enforcement efforts to try to tell them, hey, look, we know what you're doing, stop it, get in touch with Roy within 14 days, very few have, you know, to try to come into compliance. One of our problems is, is the penalty is so low in our ordinance that they can make that penalty in one night, so what's stopping them from writing it, right? So that's one of the problems.
So that's, the way that it works with a zoning violation is the zoning administrator gets a complaint.
Yep.
Does an investigation, usually sends a courtesy letter first, then sends a formal notice of violation.
Right.
The violation is not fixed. Then 30 days later, you go to court and you file for an injunction asking that the terms of the notice of violation be enforced by the court.
Mm-hmm. And so that needs to be clearer in...
It doesn't, it's not in the...
It's not in the, it's not in the code, okay, because we don't have that in the draft that we've been doing.
You don't need it.
So we don't need it.
Don't we need the fine in there?
Yes, that is in there.
Okay.
That is in there, is the fine. And the permitting process, the way we organized it, the previous ordinance was like soup to nuts. And, and I asked Roy if it made more sense to organize it by definition of what a short-term rental is. Eligibility, so there are all the pieces about how do you become eligible.
What's the problem with the permitting process?
Well, we need to have, I don't know that there is a problem with the permitting process.
Oh, okay.
And there's not a lot of change in that. We didn't, we did not make a lot of changes in that.
One of the problems with the permitting process is who is eligible to, well, anybody can apply for it.
Right.
I guess we just have to then decide if they are eligible.
Yes.
Whether they're in R1 or in any of the other districts.
Right.
Or, you know.
Right, so that...
So that's not a problem.
Well, that is part of what we're trying to remedy with what we've, with the draft that Roy has prepared for us to look at.
But what's the problem we're trying to fix with permitting?
Okay, with permitting, it's defining who is eligible to have a permit, okay? So for instance, can Marriott decide that they want to run, I'm going to use a ridiculous example, that, you know, but can an outside entity decide that they want to purchase properties in town to operate as short-term rentals? And we decided that, again, to protect it for the benefit of citizens, that we wanted it to be restricted to residents. There was a question of...
That you have to live in the unit.
It's defined, no, no. It defines, it defines, if you, if you look at what we've done, it defines how that, what that is.
I'm just, you're saying you want to make sure, I just want to make sure I'm addressing
Yes.
what you want addressed.
Yes, yes.
So you want to know who, who's eligible to apply for a permit, anybody. Now, whether they get the permit or not depends on whether they meet the ordinance.
Correct.
In terms of the zoning and...
In terms of the zoning, are they, are they...
Characteristics of the structure.
Are they resident? Again, we've got all of that noted on, do you not have this?
I do, I'm just...
It's under number two eligibility. And that is, is what we were trying to, to define, so that again, it's for the benefit of residents to own and operate.
Where are you on number two eligibility?
Roman numeral two eligibility, yeah, there.
I don't think we can make it just to where only people in town can buy houses, or if they buy them for a thing, they have to live in the town, live in town to have, live on Howard Street in order to have one over on Kent Street.
Well, it's defined what the terms of that are. So let's see, if that's what you're wondering, we've got the permitting process clarified, and the time period in which permits would be given, so that it, it's not just randomly throughout the year. So there's a period on which that would be done, so it's not a nightmare for Michelle or for the treasurer. We've got the limit of the number of, of permitted Airbnb, short-term rentals within the town limits, within any calendar year.
So is the proposal to delete the entire short-term rental that was...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not.
Yes, yes.
The reason we got here is in August, we were trying to refer several matters to the planning commission. One was the Chesapeake Bay Act.
Right.
One was B1 amendments that have changed, I mean, that we've expanded them just tonight, and then the short-term rental was enough.
Right.
The town attorney said that we couldn't just refer that, we had to have a document to refer.
Yes, so that's what we've been working on.
I was told that I was supposed to, as the town zoning administrator, come up with a document. Based on what several members of the planning commission said, I came up with a document.
And the survey.
And, and the survey.
The public input.
And it's, that's presented, so.
Yes.
I think I have done what I've been instructed to do, and, you know, I don't, if you want the town attorney to redraft the whole damn thing, fine.
I, I don't think that's the point.
I don't think that's the question either.
I just want to know what we're trying to do.
Right.
Exactly. And I think the basic document is, is okay, but there's things that need to be tweaked and questions that have to be answered, and it seemed like a public forum was the way to sort this out.
It doesn't, I don't think that's, that's going to work for us. I think we should probably write down our questions and email them to, to Andrea, so when she's looking over the sections, maybe she can give us a better idea of what we need. I mean, I, I absolutely appreciate Roy's efforts in this.
And I, let, let me put it this way, I am not, I won't say I'm not proud, but I don't claim complete ownership with either B1 or B2.
Right.
I put that together based on...
No, I understand, yeah.
And a lot of, a lot of research.
Yeah.
Right.
A lot of research.
Right.
But this is, this is why, if I can just kind of do a timeout and make a separate point, I think this is why the legislature wants there to be a written document that gets referred, so that the council understands what it's asking the planning commission to look at.
Right.
And the planning commission clearly understands.
Right.
Kind of where council is, so that they can either go, oh, no, 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 no.
But that's what we were trying to do tonight, is to refer this to council, so, yes, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's what we're trying to do.
Right, and, and I understand that, but I thought that we should all be on the same page of what we were actually referring.
Right, but I think we should write down our, write down the part that we might have an issue with, email it to Andrea and let her advise us that way.
Right, that's fine.
Okay.
Do, do they have to have a business license as well? The only...
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
The only money I'm seeing that they need is a $25 permit fee.
No, they have to have a business license too.
And I thought the permit fee was 125.
I think you're looking at the old one.
Yeah, the, the, the old one is on top, and then it goes to the smaller, more organized print is the new one.
It says, and at the top of the new one, it says revised format for new SDR ordinance. And then it's roman numerals, roman numeral one, definition. There, there's a lot, so I mean, we truly want you to look at it and see what's, like, for instance, if it is missing that they need to have a business license, which they do have to have a business license.
It just says a permit fee, but I see it now.
Yeah.
And what is the point of a million dollars in insurance?
That is, I think, the standard for liability.
Yeah.
That is, if you have a short-term rental, that's what Airbnb requires you to have.
And that's, that's currently what we have.
Right.
Right, I understand that, but that's what I was asking, what was the...
Yeah, that's, that's why.
Yeah, that sort of complies with the organizations that run them.
Most localities have, have parts of their ordinance on inspection, you know, being able to inspect for safety and for other things like that. And we don't have staff to do that kind of thing. So the idea of, of that they're agreeing that we could inspect is kind of the approach that we took.
Does this address that we already have some short-term rentals in B1, and they're not supposed to be there?
Well, that is the unpermitted, that is the unpermitted one, so yes, it talks about what the, in enforcement, if you go to, then there's the application process is roman numeral four, and enforcement penalties is roman numeral five, and it does address that. I mean, but it, it addresses it, but it's still, there have to be staff to take action on it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, yeah, otherwise, you know, right now, we have people saying, oh, I don't care, they're not going to do anything.
Right.
And that's part of the problem we have.
That don't sound just right.
So the penalty, if you, if they're caught doing it, what's the penalty?
On, looking under enforcement.
Two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty dollars a day from the date that they're, they're given, you know, a formal notice. $250 a day from the date that they're, they're given, you know, a formal notice.
A day?
Per day. Because they're, they're making at least 250 a day, Margie.
No, I'm just...
Yeah.
I'm just listening.
That should be more.
I know, some of them charge a lot more than that.
Should be more.
Yeah, I'm not looking to this thing from the town standpoint, what we're going to get out of it. I'm looking at it from the everyday citizen that owns a home. He lives in a, I mean, we don't have so many neighborhoods. The people rent their houses, but they rent for long-term. That doesn't interfere with as much as short-term rental could.
Yeah.
Doesn't always, yet I think we need some short-term rentals, but I, I think we need to be careful how many we have. I don't know whether by law we can restrict them. I don't know that we can.
Yes, you can, and most localities do restrict the number. And part of a lot of, and we didn't have complete agreement on what the number should be, but we took 5% of the, of the current housing stock, okay? Which is, is about 15, that would be about 15 short-term rentals. And we, not only did we look at that, but we tried to look at various points in time during the summer on whether or not they were fully booked up. Because we want to have room for people, but there was a lot of availability throughout the summer. And with those 15, plus the ones that are operating illegally, and, or not 15, we have 10 permitted? 12?
12.
12, who are actually playing by the rules and are permitted. And so we thought, well, 5%, which is a percentage that some localities felt was appropriate. And, um, and because, A, we want to have enough for tourists. Forget about Oyster Festival, that's a surge, that's another issue.
You're not going to get enough.
No. You'll never get enough for Oyster Festival. But there would be people who would get permits just to be able to have it open during Oyster Festival, okay? So we want to have, we want to help them succeed. We don't want to have so many that none of them can succeed.
Right.
Right? So there's that. And we want to have enough for tourists. So, um, yeah, so there was a, a lot that we looked at. And again, you, you know, you all may disagree on the numbers, and you may have better ideas, and we want to hear them.
I, I guess the question I have is, then, we've got, what, seven that are operating that aren't reporting, is that right? And so is, is anybody...
And we get no lodge, we get no lodging tax for that, by the way.
No, no, I, I get that, but the question is, with the 19 that we've got, is, has, has that level of short-term rentals been disruptive?
Well, yes, because another thing is, is there are people who have also been displaced from long-term rentals in order to make short-term rentals.
Right, and to be able to buy, but...
Yes.
So, but yes.
But there has been displacement, and that's another one of the things that you look at, is we don't have enough, uh, long-term rental stock. And we had current long-term rental stock that was converted illegally into short-term rentals. Short-term rentals, yes. And, um, so, yes, it has been disruptive. It has.
Um, under enforcement and penalties, number one says it's $250 per day.
For those who are not permitted.
Right. And then number four? They're going to, the same permit holder's going to be fined $250 on top of 250 a day for each violation?
No, tho, those are for permitted holders who have a violation, and they're going to be $250 for the violation.
Each violation.
They're, they're two different, two different things. One, the first one is for people who don't have...
Require, okay, I, I, it all just clicked. Thank you.
It took me a while on that, too, Margie. I know.
So what we have is an enforcement problem, too.
It is not, it is not easy.
Yes.
And you've got seven that are not complying, and you've got those that are. Of course, it's not fair to those that are anymore.
No.
And one, one of the questions, one of the considerations, and Mr. Putney brought this up, is do we want to have short-term rentals in the business district?
Right.
I mean, that's just a good question. Should there be, should the business district be the commercial business district? Or should it be a place where people can...
And that was one of the things, one of our guiding principles, was to protect our, our small commercial footprint. We have a very small commercial footprint, and if it was bought and turned into condominiums, why would people come?
Right.
And so that is one of the reasons why, yeah.
But we also have a, a mixed commercial, like the Prince, what is it, Prince George Street?
Yes.
Those houses are all in B1.
Yes.
And, and so that's actually housing...
There's special use permits. There is always the possibility of special use permits.
Well, you can, you can have in B1, you can have an R1 house.
You can.
I mean, those things were all there before...
Right.
Right.
The zoning thing. But if, if somebody wanted to take a commercial building that was on Prince George's Street, which is in B1, that had been used commercially, they could switch it over to basically an R1, if it met all the qualifications for, uh...
A house.
A house. And, you know, there are two examples that that has happened. One, uh, was the tavern, that used to be, or was thought to be a commercial place, and it's used as a house now. And there's another one down the street that used to be Old Time, or whatever it was called.
Make Time.
And it is now a house. And that, that's all perfectly acceptable.
But that's different than the short-term rentals.
Right, yeah, I'm not... It's sort of a dilemma, though, in my mind, uh, in the sense that what you're doing is you're going to push all these things into neighborhoods. If you take them off, that'd be one. All the short-term rentals? Short-term rentals. And, and that's where the problem lies, is in neighborhoods. People that come in for one night are not vested in our community, and...
Right.
You know, people that have lived there for a long, I mean, even somebody who rents a place for a while, they're vested in our community, you know? Long-term rentals. But short-term are not. And also, if you've got people that own these facilities far away, they're really not vested in our community either.
Well, that's, that's why we put a restriction on who could own them.
The council has to consider, and way, way against each other, and, you know... Well, this is where we need to talk about it.
And they're all currently, they're currently mostly in res, the residential areas, Larry. But you know, one thing that we did not address in this draft was we did not address in, uh, the issue of whether there should be a limit on the number of short-term rentals in a neighborhood. And some localities do that. They say you can't have more than one, more than two, or whatever, within a certain neighborhood. I mean, so there are things like that, too, to consider, Larry.
We have one in our neighborhood, and quite frankly, it, you know, it's, it's not been a problem.
Well, because there's not a lot going on.
But it's only one.
There's not a lot going on.
If you have four or five, and, and, you know, uh...
Party time.
Andrea.
Can I suggest that as a first step? That some thought be given to what zoning districts' short-term rentals will be allowed?
It, it is in there.
Okay, so you want to go with what's in here?
Well, that is what we talked through in our proposing.
Okay.
Yes.
So you want to go with what's in here?
Yes.
Okay.
When they originally were putting together the ordinance in, that is in effect now, staff attempted to define it as short-term rentals were only allowed in R1. I mean, that's what the original proposal said. It got mashed around, and that got eliminated. And that's where a lot of the confusion comes. It, it doesn't specifically say that it's just for R1, but it talks about people having to live in their houses for 180 days, have a second home, and a home is a home, not, you know, whatever it is. And do corporations own homes? I don't think so. They, domiciled and residents and stuff like that, but they don't own homes. So it is, the way that was kind of mashed together creates difficulty in enforcement.
And it was silent on whether you could have them in B2.
Well, it says you can have them in B2, but it doesn't say, and first of all, I don't know how it got into B2.
Right.
Right.
Because there are no minutes that say how this thing got changed around. But it also doesn't say if in B2, where it says you can have short-term rentals, whether those are governed by the other terms of, you know, living there for 180 days and things like that. So it should, it has to be straightened out, where you can have these things. And if you want them in B2, fine. If you want them in, you know, any place, that's fine. Put them in R1, it's too many. It ought to be cleaned up, so that...
Well, and we've, we've got them, but it's actually, that's where they are now, and it's almost the number that we have now that are permitted. So we're, we're wanting to put a cap on that.
Right.
So that it doesn't, it, it's not too many, but it's enough to meet tourist needs.
It is. But I think we've got enough.
Right, yeah.
With what we've got here.
Yep.
I agree. So what's next?
Well, I mean, I think that's council's pleasure. I will comment that there's a civil penalty in here, and so that would mean that for zoning, generally, we would have civil penalties. You can only have one or the other, civil or criminal.
What are you suggesting? I don't think we say, we mentioned criminal penalties.
No, but when you select a civil penalty, you're...
You're limiting yourself to a civil penalty.
Yes.
And we did talk about that.
Yeah.
As opposed to a criminal penalty. I think if there was a criminal penalty...
Which you still can have court with a civil penalty.
The owner, an owner could take a criminal, uh, action against a renter, couldn't they? An owner of a house that was a short-term rental?
Oh, yeah.
They could take. Let's say they did property damage, they did ma, major property damage. It's just that it limits the town from taking criminal action.
Correct. Correct, yes. I didn't, yeah, I was involved.
Okay, so...
I don't know where we are, but anyway.
Did, I guess the question is, does this need to be worked, reworked at all, or are we referring this to the, to the planning commission, the way it...
I think Andrea's going to work some of it, right?
I don't know.
Okay, well, if you want, I mean, it's, or you...
I mean, we'd all look. I think we'd like to have that discussion with you. You know, if we're looking, if we're looking at, you know, at what do you find confusing? We want it to be, we want it to be a good ordinance, we want it to be clear.
Can we email you with questions about this?
Yeah.
And then, once you've looked at it, what, okay.
Yeah, that's...
All right.
All right, you need to look at it also as to what's legal and what's not.
Yes.
Yes.
What can't we do and what we can do.
I think so, too.
All right.
So then the next step would be that we'll be waiting to hear from Andrea for her advice, and then we will determine next, next steps after that. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe by the next meeting, Andrea.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, if you just say until, till it might go on six months.
Oh, I know, it's been such a long process.
All right, should we move on?
Yes.
All right. Next item is, we got the agenda, or the audit, uh, back for people to look at. There's a lot of numbers, and I, I won't, uh, say that I understand all of the things as they're put together, but the bottom line is, there were no discrepancies found, and we had a surplus for fiscal year 2022 of about $21,000. And so that's a good thing.
It is.
And so, um, do we have to accept that, or is that just for council information?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll put it on the, uh...
Website?
Yep.
Good.
All right.
That's great.
Next item is involving where we spent that surplus, in that when we planned for the pool, uh, as everybody's probably aware, we had to keep cutting back things in terms of size and, and, uh, slides and different pieces of the pool. One of the things that's not required, but, uh, a great addition in terms of maintenance and cleaning is a pool cover, and that wasn't on there. And that pool cover, um, it may be a little, did you happen to check to see whether that is still good?
The price is still good.
Okay. The price is still good. We may be able to save a little money, because in the estimate that's on your sheet, it, uh, they charged a sales tax, and we might be able, we got to pay it.
They said that because the purchaser was going to be paddock pools...
Okay.
They had to charge a sales tax.
So, that being said, the price as presented is the price of a pool cover. And it is one of those things that is not a must-have, but it is a, you know, it's probably the next closest thing to a must-have. And, um, it takes care of our surplus for the last fiscal year.
Yeah, it's interesting how they line it up.
We're talking about $20,098.
Uh, the final cost is...
Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve for the purchase of the new pool, for the pool cover for the new pool, in the amount of $21,505 by, is it by J.A. Heisler, our contractor?
The company that's putting together is, uh...
Paddock Pools.
Myco Pool Covers, but then Heisler or Paddock Pools installation is kind of a bear, because they have to put anchors in it, that you don't have trip hazards and, you know...
Yes.
Spring-loaded and, and that kind of stuff. Do I have a second?
A second.
Yeah, let me talk, let me discuss this a little bit.
Okay, well, that's what, that's where we are now.
Right, right. You know, I really buy the pool out there at Bethpage, and, uh, they've got a pool cover on it right now. I've never, you know, I worked at pools in the 60s and 70s, and we never had pool covers, but it sure makes sense to me that we should have.
Yep.
I assume we're doing this because it, it protects during the winter, I guess it protects...
Right, and it, and it makes...
Other aspects of the pool.
Makes the opening easier, because you have fewer leaves to clean out.
Dead animals, you know?
Yeah.
Bats.
Fewer dead animals, and...
Yeah.
Do you drain the water out of the pool?
No.
No.
Shock it or whatever.
Okay.
Nope.
It's a lot of money, but, you know, we spent a lot of money on this pool.